Thank you, Madam President. Councilor Arroyo.
Present.
Councilor Arroyo. Councilor Baker.
Yes.
Councilor Bach.
Present.
Councilor Braden.
Present.
Councilor Edwards. Thank you. Councilor Asabi George.
Present.
Councilor Flaherty.
Yes.
Councilor Flynn.
Yes.
Council Janey.
Present.
Council Mahia.
Here.
Council O'Malley. And Council Wu. We do have a quorum, Madam President.
Thank you. And who are we missing? We're missing Wu, O'Malley, and...
We're missing, um, Council Braden, O'Malley, and Wu.
Um, I see Braden.
Oh, great. Thank you, Council. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I've been informed by our clerk that a quorum is present this morning. Council Arroyo will introduce our clergy, and then we will recite the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilor Arroyo, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Madam President. Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you to Bishop Nicholas for joining us today. Bishop Nicholas is currently serving as the pastor of the Voice of the Gospel Tabernacle Church in Mattapan. In 2004, Bishop Nicholas created the Voices of the Tabernacle Multi-Service Center, which is a community faith-based organization that works to support Boston's Haitian refugee and immigrant community. The organization provides after-school programming, family counseling, summer youth jobs, and summer camps. Bishop Nicholas serves as a member of the Black Minister Alliance, the Ten Point Coalition, the Haitian Americans United, and is on the Member Advisory Board for TCF. Bishop Nicholas has dedicated his life to serving our community and making a difference, and it's my honor today to open the floor to Bishop Nicholas for today's morning convocation. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you very much, Council Arroyo. Thank you very much to everyone, to your council. It is a pleasure, and thank you for having me. I would just start my prayer with a word of wisdom in the Kingdom Version. It says, "Except the Lord build the house; to those who build it in vain. Except the Lord watch over the city, who suffer watch over it in vain." It is not by accident that before you start your meeting, you call upon God wisdom. In the midst of pandemic COVID-19, a country, our city, need more than ever the presence of God. It is by the God presence, we could have our city safe, we could have our electoral official conduct their business to make the life of every citizen in Massachusetts, especially in City of Boston, safe. So it is my pleasure to be here with you and to bless you in the name of our Lord and to ask God to pour His blessing upon you, to give you all the wisdom, the protection, to watch over you as you carry out a very heavy load of responsibility to make lives of the citizens of Boston not only better, but also to watch over their well-being. May God bless you. May God continue to walk step by step with you, and may you be blessed, may you be safe, may you be filled with wisdom, and bear no fear, because God is in your sight. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we bring to you those electoral officials that you choose. In the Bible, we read, "Every authority established by God, you take part of the work they're doing." We pray that you watch over the state, you protect them, you give them the wisdom, the kindness, to lead the city of Boston. We pray that you protect them against all the sickness, against all the whatsoever could stop them to work, in order to make lives of the citizens of the great city of Boston. We pray for all of them, we pray for their wisdom, for their safety. Protect them against the disease, against the COVID-19, Lord. We ask that you cover them in the midst of the pandemic, but they will be healthy, they will fill with wisdom, they will fill with knowledge, and the light of your Holy Spirit will guide them step by step in everything they will be doing, regardless whatever against them. But if God are with us, who shall against us? If you are with them, who shall be against them? Lord, that my prayer for each and every one, for mayor, our governor, every electoral official, everybody who work in the public office, make them safe, bless them, guide them, protect them. We ask all this in the name of our mighty Lord. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you. I hope you'll join us as we pledge allegiance to the flag. Thank you.
Yes, I will.
Pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you again, Bishop. Feel free to stay on if you'd like, or to certainly leave at your leisure. I know how busy you are, and it was a pleasure to have you. Thank you for your prayers, and I ask that you continue to pray for us.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
This is one of my duty to pray for you, because you need a prayer, you need a script, you need all the clergy to accompany you, because this is not an easy task you have.
Yes. Thank you so much, sir. So now we will move on. Before we do, Madam Clerk, I see that Council O'Malley has joined us. If you could amend the attendance report to reflect that Council O'Malley is here.
Yes.
That would be great. And we will now move on to approval of the minutes, seeing and hearing no discussion. The chair moves that the minutes from the last meeting will stand as approved. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Thank you, Madam President. Councilor Arroyo.
Yes.
Councilor Arroyo, yes. Council Baker.
Yes.
Council Baker, yes. Council Bach.
Yes.
Council Bach, yes. Council Braden.
Yes.
Council Braden, yes. Council Campbell.
Yes.
Council Campbell, yes. Councilor Edwards.
Yes.
Council Edwards, yes. Council Asabi George.
Yes.
Council Asabi George, yes. Council Flaherty.
Yes.
Council Flaherty, yes. Council...
Yes.
We can't hear you.
Yes.
Wait a second. Madam Clerk?
Clerk is on mute.
Madam Clerk?
Yes. I didn't mute. Someone muted me. I have both hands busy, so I didn't mute.
I'm so sorry. Could you...
Is it Council Flaherty, Council Flynn?
Yes.
Okay. Council Janey.
Yes.
Council Janey, yes. Council Mahia.
Yes.
Council Mahia, yes. Council O'Malley.
Yes.
Council O'Malley, yes. And Council Wu.
Yes.
Council Wu, yes. And Madam President, should we also mark the attendance?
Please, if you could, update the attendance to reflect that Council Wu is here.
There was unanimous approval of the minutes.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Madam Clerk. The minutes of the last meeting are approved. We'll move on to communications from His Honor, the mayor, beginning with docket 1032.
Thank you. Docket 1032, message and order for approval and ordinance admitting the City of Boston Ordinance Chapter 10 to be known as the Housing Stability Notification Act. The purpose of this ordinance is to promote housing stability of Boston residents by ensuring that they have information about their rights and about housing resources that are available to them, filed in the City Clerk's Office on October 5, 2020.
Thank you so much. Docket 1032 will be assigned to the Committee on Government Operations. We'll move on to docket 1033.
Docket 1033, message and order authorizing the City of Boston to participate in the Massachusetts Commercial Property Assess Clean Energy Program, known as APEES Massachusetts. This order authorizes the city to enter into a municipal assessment and assignment agreement with mass development, thereby allowing building owners in Boston to participate in this statewide financing program.
Thank you. Docket 1033 will be assigned to the Committee on Environment, Resiliency, and Parks. Madam Clerk, could you please read docket 1034?
Thank you. Docket 1034, message and order to declare surplus to owned former public works department parcels to transfer the care, custody, and management and control of said properties to the Public Facilities Commission. The parcels are located in the Roxbury District at Tremont Street, Ward 9, Parcel 02240020, and Melina Cass Boulevard, Ward 9, Parcel 02225005.
Thank you. Docket 1034 will be assigned to the Committee on Planning Development and Transportation. We'll move on to docket 1035.
Thank you. Docket 1035, message and order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and extend an amount of $961,086.29 in the form of a grant for the FY21 Youth Works awarded by the Mass Executive Office of Labor and Workforce Development, passed through the Economic Development and Industrial Corporation of Boston, be administered by Youth Engagement and Employment, the Greenwich Fund, Boston's Success Link Employment Program for Summer 2020.
Thank you. Docket 1035 will be assigned to the Committee on Strong Women, Family, and Communities, and we'll move on to docket 1036.
Docket 1036, message and order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and extend an amount of $498,291 in the form of a grant for the First Responders Comprehensive Addiction and Recovery Act Cooperative Agreement, awarded by the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, to be administered by the Fire Department. The grant will fund a collaborative effort between Boston Fire Department, first responders, the mayor's Office of Recovery Services, the Boston Public Health Commission, and community-based organizations to improve the city's response to opioid overdoses. This is year three of a four-year grant.
Thank you. Docket 1036 will be assigned to the Committee on Public Health. We'll move on to docket 1037.
Thank you. Docket 1037, message and order author...
Sorry.
Docket 1037, message and order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and extend an amount of $55,000 in the form of a grant for the No Kids Hungry Campaign, awarded by Share Our Strength, to be administered by the Office of Food Access. The grant will fund staff costs for the school food insecurity specialists.
Thank you so much. The chair recognizes Council Braden, who is the Chair of Strong Women, Families, and Communities. Council Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I request that the council suspend the rules and pass docket number 1037 for the city to expend the amount of $55,000 in the form of a grant for No Kids Hungry Campaign awarded. This grant will support critically needed services by funding staff costs for the school food insecurity specialist, and I'd like it to be available as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Braden. The chair recognizes Council Edwards. Council Edwards, did you want to chime in? I see your blue hand.
No. Madam President, I had raised my hand on the first docket to specifically talk about the mayor's housing notification ordinance.
My apologies for that. We will make sure that you get room in this meeting if we will get you in, if you'd still like to speak to that later under announcements. Wonderful. Thank you. Sorry that we missed you there. Council Braden seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1037. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Docket 1037, Councilor Arroyo.
Yes.
Councilor Arroyo, yes. Council Baker.
Yes.
Council Baker, yes. Council Bach.
Yes.
Council Bach, yes. Council Braden.
Yes.
Council Braden, yes. Council Campbell.
Yes.
Council Campbell, yes. Council Edwards.
Yes.
Council Edwards, yes. Council Asabi George.
Yes.
Council Asabi George, yes. Council Flaherty.
Yes.
Council Flaherty, yes. Council Flynn.
Yes.
Council Flynn, yes. Council Janey.
Yes.
Council Janey, yes. Council Mahia.
Yes.
Council Mahia, yes. Council O'Malley.
Yes.
Council O'Malley, yes. And Council Wu.
Yes.
Council Wu, yes. Madam President, docket number 1037 received a unanimous vote.
Thank you so much. Docket 1037 has passed. We will now move on to reports of committees, beginning with docket 1038. This is reports of public officers and others. Rather.
Docket 1038, communication was received from Timothy J. Smith, Esquire, executive officer, regarding the election of Michael D. O'Reilly and Michael W. McLaughlin as trustees of the Boston Retirement Board, commencing October 1, 2020, and ending September 30, 2023.
Thank you. Docket 1038 will be placed on file, and now we will move on to matters recently heard for possible action, starting with docket 0226.
Thank you, Madam President. Excuse me. Docket 0226, ordinance to provide for safe disposal of shacks through the establishment of product stewardship program.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilor Edwards, who is Chair of the committee.
Thank you very much, Madam President. We had an excellent hearing and working session on the proposal sponsored by Council Asabi George. Ultimately, we are really close to the finish line. It was wonderful to see her leadership, working with the administration, and getting us to the final points, where we're just going to work on the language at this point and make sure that we get something before this body, hopefully before the end of this month, for approval. But I did want to ask that it stay in committee until we finish those final tidbits of information to make sure that we incorporated all of the comments that Council Asabi George also heard and was willing to accept. So I asked at this moment, I wanted to note at this moment, we are very close to doing this. It's historic, and I wanted to thank the lead sponsor. At the same time, we just have some small things to put into it. If the lead sponsor has anything further to add, I am done with my report. You're on mute.
Madam Chair, we cannot hear you.
The chair recognizes Council Asabi George, who is the sponsor of this ordinance. Councilor, you have the floor. Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. And thank you to the chair, Council Edwards, for running. I think it was a very efficient and quick, yet extremely productive, hearing last week, and I appreciate the input and comment from a number of colleagues present that day. As Council Edwards mentioned, we are so close to the finish line on this. I am really excited to get to that point, where we will have close to 100 kiosks across the City of Boston that would allow for proper sharp disposal across all of our neighborhoods here in the City of Boston. And certainly, the conversation often leads to a discussion around improperly discarded needles in the mass and cast area. I do think it's important to highlight and emphasize that although this will have some impact on the predominance of improperly discarded needles in our streets, in our neighborhoods, in our gutters, in our alleyways, this really is around the larger context of the conversation of properly discarded at-home use notes for diabetes, for fertility treatments, for other chronic illnesses, and also for those that are dealing with the opioid crisis and dealing with substance use disorders at home. So proper disposal is critically important to discuss and to educate the public about, and to also make sure that we have appropriate resources across our city for that proper disposal to happen. We'll certainly talk about this in greater detail when we are ready to submit through the chair a final drafted copy of this ordinance. I want to also thank the administration for being really active, actively present and engaged in the conversation and the language to make sure that this ordinance is written appropriately and also enforceable in partnership with the Boston Public Health Commission as well as ISD. Thank you to Madam Chair, and thank you, Madam President. Thank you so much. Docket 0226 will remain in the Committee of Government Operations, and we'll now move on to docket 0747. Madam Clerk?
Docket 0747, audit for hearing regarding the status of college and university plans to reopen for fall 2020 amid COVID-19 pandemic.
Thank you so much. The chair recognizes Council Arroyo, who is the Chair of the Committee on Public Health. Council Arroyo, you have the floor.
Thank you. I'm just looking for the write-up on this. It doesn't look like I have it, so I'm just going to go ahead. So we had this hearing on the reopening of our college campuses, presence for that hearing. We have the administration, the PDA, the Boston Public Health Committee, as well as the universities of Northeastern, BU, BC, and Harvard. We also had counselors. President Janey was present, Council Braden, Council Bach, Council Asabi George, Council Matt O'Malley, Council Julia Mahia, myself. I believe that's the entire list. We discussed, essentially, we had had a meeting in July, a hearing in July, to discuss what their operations were going to look like when they reopened. This was a hearing to discuss, now that they are open, what they're doing and how they're moving forward. There was discussion regarding what their plans were for the spring semester. Many of them have not made that decision yet, and told us in the hearing that they would be making those decisions in the coming weeks, similarly with the decisions to go home for Thanksgiving. That hearing was, that hearing had the sponsors of President Janey, President Braden, Council Braden, and Council Bach. And at this time, unless there's anything else that we need on that report back, that's what I've got.
And I assume you're recommending that this will remain in the committee?
Yes.
For more discussion in the future?
Yes.
Okay. Wonderful. Wonderful. Not seeing any blue hands, we will move right on. Docket 0747 will remain in the Committee of Public Health. We'll move on to docket 0817. Madam Clerk?
Docket 0817, message and order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and extend an amount of, excuse me, $23,348,669 in the form of a grant for the FY20 Emergency Solutions Grant COVID-19 Supplemental, awarded by the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, to be administered by the Department of Neighborhood Development. The grant will fund special activities to prevent, prepare for, and respond to the coronavirus pandemic among individuals and families who are homeless or receiving homeless assistance. This award is the second allocation to the program under the CARES Act.
Thank you so much. The chair recognizes Council Edwards. Council Edward, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. This matter was sponsored by the mayor and was referred to the committee on June 24. We had a virtual hearing on this on October 6. Tim Davis, Deputy Director of Policy from DND, Rick Wilson from A&amp;F from DND, Jim Green from the Homeless Service Department from DND, and Katie Cahill all attended, and as a result, excuse me, all attended and testified to the work of this grant. They also, to our surprise and very much satisfaction, testified to the work of the money that we had already allocated or had allowed to go to DND for homelessness prevention. We really appreciated that background information. This is a new set of funds that will grant special activities to prevent, prepare for, and respond to the coronavirus pandemic among individuals and families who are homeless or receiving homelessness assistance. Activities prioritized for funding include adding new capacity to increase the number of winter overflow temporary emergency shelter beds, emergency shelter diversion activities, and investment in rehousing programs. This award is the second allocation under the CARES Act. The total amount, again, is about 20, is a little over $23 million, $23.38, $23.3 million to be specific. Having heard from them and having heard about all the effectiveness of the money and how much it's desperately needed before we end up with a second wave and in the middle of winter, we need to make sure that they get this fund as soon as possible. That is why I'm recommending to my colleagues that this matter ought to pass today.
Thank you, Council Edwards. Council Edward seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 0817. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Docket 0817, Councilor Arroyo.
Yes.
Council Baker.
Yes.
Baker, yes. And Council Arroyo, yes. Council Bach.
Yes.
Council Bach, yes. Council Braden.
Yes.
Council Braden, yes. Council Campbell.
Yes.
Council Campbell, yes?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Council Edwards.
Yes.
Council Edwards, yes. Council Asabi George.
Yes.
Council Asabi George, yes. Council Flaherty.
Yes.
Council Flaherty, yes. Council Flynn.
Yes.
Council Flynn, yes. Council Janey.
Yes.
Council Janey, yes. Council Mahia.
Yes.
Council Mahia, yes. Council O'Malley.
Yes.
Council O'Malley, yes. And Council Wu.
Yes.
Council Wu, yes. Madam President, docket number 0817 received a unanimous vote.
Thank you so much. The committee report has been accepted, and docket 0817 has passed. Could we now move on to docket 0985?
Thank you. Docket 0985, audit for hearing discussing permits for at-home entrepreneurs in the City of Boston.
Thank you so much. The chair recognizes Council Mahia, who is the Chair of the Committee on Small Business and Workforce Development. Council Mahia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. On Tuesday, we held a hearing discussing permits for at-home entrepreneurs in the City of Boston. We were joined by my colleagues, Council Flynn, Reden, Bach, Asabi George, Campbell, and Arroyo. Our panelists from the administration included Natalia Uvite, Director of Small Businesses, Dan Manning from ISD, and Ayesha Miller, also from ISD, who stepped in to handle a lot of our questions. So a big shout-out to Ayesha for always representing. Our advocacy panel included Shagun Uldui, who is the Executive Director of BECA, Arlene Nakogu Laguti, founder of Imani Juices. We were also very fortunate to have Andre Interazi, who took the initiative to reach out to our office to get this project off the ground. We had a very productive conversation, and I just wanted to cover a little bit about what was said. Ayesha Miller was kind enough to pull up a report of complaints of improper businesses being run out of people's homes. She found a total of 22 complaints, all of them took place in Dorchester, Roxbury, and Mattapan. And this is crucial, and I want to just give a quick shout-out to Council Arroyo, who asked the question, because this critical information... asked the question, because this critical information tells us a lot about where the market is for these permits. Shagun was also really helpful in creating and dropping a lot of amazing knowledge about what's at stake for Black and Brown businesses owners in the city of Boston. At the start of the outbreak, over 60% of BECA members reported not having enough resources to last 90 days, and that 95% of Black businesses across the country did not gain access to the first round of Paycheck Protection Program. This is important because a major reason why Black and Brown businesses are choosing to operate out of their homes currently is because they lack the institutional and equity and access to capital that they need. We also heard from Irene, who offered incredible personal insights to how the existing residential kitchen laws exclude many different kinds of at-home entrepreneurs. She works as a juicer and an iron deficiency extraordinaire, and pointed out that juices do not fall under the existing cottage food industry definition. Finally, last and certainly not least, we heard from Andre, who inspired this entire conversation. His detailed experiences applying for a residential kitchen permit in Los Angeles compared to his experience in Boston, where there is no process at all, gave us really marching orders in terms of what we needed to do in amending the Boston zoning articles to a section on accessory home occupations. We are also thankful for all the panelists and members of the public who reached out to our office to offer support. There's still so much work to do, and we'd like to leave this issuing committee for the time being. And I also want to just give a shout-out to the mayor and the administration for showing up and actually leaning into the conversation. And want to be really clear that as we continue to have this dialogue, that this is really looking at opportunities to support different types of entrepreneurs, whether it's the hairdresser, the tailor, the person who does lipstick bombs, whatever the case is, it's about removing the barriers and creating space for small businesses to be able to incubate in their homes before they're spending money on trying to have a brick and mortar. So, I really do appreciate my colleagues who participated, and look forward to continuing to keep this in committee and moving the conversation forward. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counsel Mejia. Docket 0985 will remain in the Committee on Small Business and Workforce Development. And now, we will move on to motions, orders, and resolutions, starting with docket 1039.
Thank you. Docket 1039, Counselor Arroyo offered the following order for hearing to discuss the city of Boston and Boston Police Department's oversight protocols for Boston Police Department overtime and to discuss and touring effective oversight measures.
And before I call upon the lead sponsor of this docket, let me just say, for those who may be wondering and who may have noticed that this is similar to another docket, after speaking with the lead sponsors of both dockets, I've determined that we will allow this docket in to the agenda, and that this docket would be assigned to the committee where we're already having conversations about police overtime, and that is the Committee on Ways and Means. So, just wanted to put that out there for anyone who is wondering about Rule 15 and whether we're bumping up against that. So, at this time, the Chair recognizes Counsel Arroyo. Counsel Arroyo, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Where fiscal storage for the city of Boston falls within that responsibility, but however, beyond the obvious fiscal responsibility of residents for oversight and fraud create deep community mistrust of the institutions responsible. In 2012, The Boston Globe reported on the issue of fraud regarding court overtime, and reporting there were several findings, including officers submitting slips that went past their end time and altering notices to appear, an officer who retired with pending charges of inappropriately authorizing officers to appear in court, and an officer who received a 60-day suspension with 20 days to serve for authorizing officers to appear in court without proper notice and submitting a slip that went past the court end time. I requested through a 17F, I believe, a month or two ago, the court overtime records that we have accessible to us. Those records that we have in the process, it's largely a paper process. In other words, when an officer appears to court, they check in on paper. They receive a court overtime slip when they check out that is also on paper. We don't have access to those records because they're on paper, and we have not received those from BPD. What we received were the electronic records of officers' reported time as they sought to be paid by the city, and that's electronic. And so, earlier this month, several officers were indicted on overtime fraud, and last week, the Bay State Banner reported on continuing discrepancies in port OT using those records that we had, namely, officers who had reported court overtime hours, but simultaneously during those hours were in the community writing police reports, conducting FIOs, or issuing traffic citations, in some cases, miles away from the nearest courthouse. The report shed light on issues that appeared to mirror the very same issues we found in 2012 regarding court overtime supervision. We all have a stake in creating systems that serve us, and I look forward to continuing the work that we have started together to address these issues, namely, Counselor Bach, Counselor Campbell, and Counsel O'Malley, in the overtime conversations that we're having. My hope is that we can get a clearer picture of what changes took place after this issue in 2012, what and why the purpose of paper documentation that makes it incredibly difficult to audit this process is ongoing, and how we can actually create new supervision protocols and audit protocols for these kinds of issues, not just in BPD, but also with the city of Boston, because ultimately, we write the check. And so, there has to be some way for us to do an overtime supervision or audit process in line with the supervision and audit process that BPD should be setting up and ensuring they have on our end as well. We all have a stake in creating new systems, and I look forward to doing that together with you all.
Thank you, Counsel Arroyo. I don't see any, oh, I do see a blue hand. Okay. The Chair recognizes Counsel Bach. Counsel Bach, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. I just wanted to take the opportunity to say, looking forward to running this concurrently with the docket in Ways and Means. And, you know, we, as colleagues, remember, obviously, we filed that, Counsel Campbell and O'Malley and I, back in July, and we had a hearing in late July that I think ran four hours. And I just, I wanted to say to the body that, as I was preparing to send over sort of reminder information request and scheduling check-in with the administration, because we have committed to having those quarterly, I was going back through just all of the questions that colleagues asked at that July hearing, and really just appreciating the degree of focus on this issue. And I think, to Counsel Arroyo's point, the number of really important details that we need to nail down, because I think, as many of us focused in on at that hearing, you don't get change in the overtime budget if you don't have new controls. And I think Counsel Arroyo is raising the really important issue of fraud and the fact, right, we have controls for multiple reasons, and of course, they all run into each other because budget controls is about the money that we can spend on other things, but it's also about people trusting us as those fiscal stewards. So, glad to be having this connected conversation and just a coming attractions flag for colleagues that we will be combining this with the quarterly overtime oversight hearings that we committed to, to the public back in July, and that that will be coming up at kind of the end of October, beginning of November, when we'll have all the Q1 data in. So, thank you so much, Madam President.
Thank you so much. Not seeing any other blue hands. We will, Counsel O'Malley, did you want to speak? Oh, sign on. Okay, so we're going to move into who wants to add their name. Thank you. Madam Clerk, if you could please add Counselor Braden, Counselor Edwards, Counselor Campbell, Counselor Asabi George, Counselor O'Malley, Counselor Mejia, Counselor Bach, Counselor Wu, please also add the Chair. A docket 1039 will be assigned to the Ways and Means Committee, so that we are having these conversations together. So, that is the Ways and Means Committee. And now, at this time, I am going to turn over the Chair to Vice Chair O'Malley, since I am on this next docket. Counsel O'Malley, you have the floor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Madam President. Madam Clerk, could you please read docket 1040 into the record and place it before the body?
Docket 1040, Counsel Flynn offered the following order for hearing to discuss pedestrian safety, traffic enforcement, and Vision Zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The Chair now recognizes the District Counselor from South Boston. Counselor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Counsel O'Malley. Vice President O'Malley, may I suspend Rule 12 and add President Janey and Counselor Bach as an original cosponsors to this hearing order?
Seeing and hearing no objection to the suspension of the rules, both the Council President and the District Counselor from Beacon Hill are added as original cosponsors. Thank you. Please proceed, Counselor Flynn.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. This hearing is to discuss ways that we can further improve traffic calming measures with infrastructure improvements, slower speeds, stricter enforcements. Each year that I've been on the council, I've called for a hearing, many hearings, on safety of our roads, as I believe it is one of the most critical issues we face in Boston. Following a tragedy a couple years back in South Boston, I put out a 12-point plan, including infrastructure improvements aimed at improving safety in our communities. I will continue to work closely with Boston Transportation Department, Boston Police Department. We have also experienced serious and tragic crashes in our district, and they remind us that the work is never over when it comes to achieving Vision Zero, no serious or fatal crashes in our city. Recently, a pedestrian was struck by a vehicle near Andrews Square in South Boston, and another pedestrian was struck by a pickup truck at the entrance of the Public Garden, where the truck crashed into a stone pillar. We pray for these victims and their families. Even as we've witnessed less traffic during the COVID pandemic, some drivers view these lanes and roads as a license to speed, and they put the safety and lives of so many people in danger. So, we need to continue to focus on pedestrian and traffic safety with infrastructure improvements to our environment, such as speed humps, raised crosswalks, curb extensions, road diets, rapid flash beacons, speed feedback signs that would aid in traffic calming. We also need a reduction of the speed limit to 20 miles an hour, which myself and Counselor Frank Baker have worked on in the past several years, and signage posted in our residential neighborhoods. Studies have shown that the chances of survival are less serious and less serious injuries greatly improve at 20 miles per hour. On many of our streets, 25 miles an hour is flying, and I don't believe one could stop in time if a child or someone jumped out from behind a car. We need to continue working closely with all police captains on areas for Operation Crosswalks and providing strict enforcement to change these behaviors. Many of you know, my parents often walk throughout South Boston with my special needs nephew, Braden. I can't tell you how many times cars have flown by them in crosswalks. My chief of staff, Charlie Levin, recently had a baby. He tells me the same story as well with his little kids. In short, everyone is in a rush. We have way too many cars in rideshires speeding. We have distracted drivers everywhere. I know Counselor Campbell has discussed a traffic enforcement division at BPD in the past. Perhaps we need to discuss additional avenues for enforcement as well, whether it's BTD or Division for Serious Public Safety Issues. I want to thank Counselor Janey and Counselor Bach for their partnership on this hearing. I know Counselor Braden has done a lot of work as well. And I know that pedestrian safety is a big issue that we are all passionate about, district city councils, and at large, city councils, and the mayor as well. I look forward to having this hearing so we can discuss how we can improve pedestrian safety and traffic safety. Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Thank you very much, Counsel Flynn. The Chair now recognizes the Council President. Counsel Janey, you have the floor.
Thank you so much. And I want to start by thanking Counsel Flynn for his leadership on this issue, as well as Counsel Bach. Also want to acknowledge Counsel Wu for her leadership in this space. Want to thank the many advocates that I've been blessed to work with. I want to thank Chief Osgood for his good work and his entire team. People know, you know, I think I'm the only council that doesn't own a car walking in the city of Boston. And, oh, no, I'm not the only one. Okay, I got, I have some company now. So, one of the only councils that doesn't have a car and really relies on walking and public transportation. Working with residents, whether it's to get a stop sign, a crosswalk, you know, handicap parking has been very rewarding, but we can't piecemeal our way out of this crisis. We need to make sure that we are building new infrastructure and reimagining our city streets. Our city streets were designed to accommodate cars, and much of the planning that has happened in our city has been planning to accommodate more cars. And we really need to make sure that we have an infrastructure in place that recognizes all of the different modes of transportation and that keeps residents safe, particularly our seniors, those with disabilities, our young children. Unfortunately, the tragedies that Counselor Flynn was mentioning in his remarks have hit close to home, and a dear family friend, you know, relative was hit by hit-and-run and is no longer with us. And so, in the last couple of weeks, we did end our council meeting in tribute to that person, and our prayers are important. We continue to pray for victims of these crashes, but victims and their families need more than prayers. They need our action, they need our advocacy. And so, I'm really grateful to be able to work on this issue, to continue to advocate in this space, and to work with my colleagues on the council. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you very much, Madam President. The Chair now recognizes the District Counselor from Beacon Hill, and the other counselor, who is sans automobile, Counselor Bach, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, and thank you so much to Counselor Flynn for his leadership and President Janey for her partnership, and I'm proud to be in the No Car Caucus. I will say, my office, in fact, no one in the office owns a car, not to be competitive, but, and not that we would have that basis. But certainly, that's how I get around the city. It's how a huge number of my constituents get around the city. And I just think it's really important, when we talk about Vision Zero, that important set of policy principles that Counselor Flynn has highlighted for us here, to remember that Vision Zero is about zero deaths, and the people right at the top of that pyramid are pedestrians, right? The idea of Vision Zero is we're going to put first and foremost the users of our public spaces, including our streets and sidewalks, who are the most vulnerable to a serious accident or even a fatality, and that's the pedestrians, first of all, right? And then, it's bicyclists, and then, basically, the more armor you have around you, right, the further down the pyramid you are. And I think that when we really focus on these pedestrian issues as issues of safety, I think that it highlights the fact that sometimes that means that for cars in a given space, we have to give up a little bit of convenience. And to me, when safety and convenience are trading off against each other, it's no contest. And I have seen, you know, Counselor Flynn mentioned the terrible crash into a pedestrian at the edge of, between our districts last week by the Public Garden. I have seen people be hit and almost hit on that, what can sometimes turn into a racetrack of Charles Street running between Boylston and Beacon. And I think it's so important that we slow those speedways around the parks down, and I'm actually quite excited about the bike lane potential to do that, to help just narrow in some places there and just encourage slower driving. But it's so important for us to take this ethos of putting pedestrian safety first and put it into all of our decisions, right, so that we're not just fighting crosswalk by crosswalk for safety, we're really, like, designing all of our streets and sidewalks in Boston with that pyramid in mind. And I appreciate the work that the Transportation Department and Public Works have done on this front, and was just talking to Public Works last week about an important intersection that they're looking to make more accessible. But I think that we can always do more, and also, we can always approach this work with greater urgency. And sometimes, it does mean rethinking some of our legacy systems, our signalization policies, other things like that. So, really looking forward to the hearing. Agree, it would be remiss not to acknowledge, you know, there's, we have this three-person limit, but there's a lot of people on the council who have been leaders on this, from Counsel Wu to Counsel Braden to lots of others. I could probably name everybody. I think that it's a really important issue for us to keep taking in, too, as a council. And again, thank you to Counsel Flynn, Counsel Janey, and to you, Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you very much, Counsel Bach. On behalf of Counselors Braden and Wu, my colleagues in the Electric Car Caucus, we appreciate the good work of the No Car Caucus as well and your leadership here. Would anybody else like to speak on this matter? Seeing and hearing no further discussion for folks to speak, would any individuals like to add their name as cosponsors? Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Edwards, Counselor Braden, Counselor Asabi George, Counselor Mejia, Counselor Arroyo, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Wu, Counselor Campbell. Please add my name, Madam Chair. And not seeing any other further discussion, on docket 1040, this docket shall be referred to the Committee on Planning. On docket 1040, this docket shall be referred to the Committee on Planning, Development and Transportation. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much, thank you. We will now move on to docket 1041, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Docket 1041, council Mahia offered the following ordinance, amending the City of Austin Code, ordinances, chapter six, section six dash ten, language and communications access for city services.
Thank you. The chair recognizes councillor Mahia. Councillor Mahia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. One thing that we always talk about in our office is how tired we are about the conversation, about the conversation, about the conversation. But if we take a step back and acknowledge our own privilege, sometimes just having that conversation is next to impossible because our city language access infrastructure isn't there to support us. Back in May, our office sponsored a hearing alongside councillor Flynn, who you all know has been a big advocate in the language access space on the status of language access in the midst of COVID. It was the first time that the city council held a hearing that was simultaneously interpreted in multiple languages. This should not, this should be the norm in our city, but we often lack the resources, time, or the political will to make it happen. Last week, our office held a community conversation around language access, attended by advocates, interpreters, lawyers, teachers, parents, members of the administration, and so many more. We heard a lot of the same problems that we did in our May hearing. This issue is not getting better, and unless we act to strengthen our city languages, our city language and communications access plan, it will never get better. This amended ordinance is designed to make our language access service stronger and more accountable to the people. It formally establishes the Office of Language and Communications Access and makes their process more community-centered by working with members of the public to create a set of language access guidelines that each department must build off of. This ordinance also expands the number of languages that the city must provide translation for beyond just the five quote-unquote "major" languages spoken in the city. We've also added what we refer to as plain language and cultural competency clauses, which state that the city needs to respect the cultural diversity when translating vital information and ensure that we are communicating in a way that people will actually understand. How many times have we been in hearings and one of us had to ask the panelists actually what it means when they were talking about section two, portion of five of chapter four, "we're here, thou out, thou're out"? I don't even know how to say it, that's how bad it is. And this ordinance, we're doing away with that. Finally, we also have added a text-to-speech component that will make it easier for people who cannot read or write in any language to access services and information. As you know, I always talk about adult literacy. As I mentioned in the past, my mom didn't even complete fourth grade, so reading and writing even in her own language is difficult. That was a lot of information I just threw out there, but it's important because we're trying to lead by example when it comes to how we communicate complex policy ideas to our constituents. And since this is the first ordinance that our office has filed, we want it to be thorough. We look forward to the steps that are to come, and I want to thank everyone from our hearing and our community conversation who helped make this happen. And I also just want to give a quick shout out to councillor Wu, who I know was a lead many years ago in formulating the first ordinance around this issue, so I just wanted to pay you your kudos, Wu, for bringing this to the forefront, absolutely, because we're not here to take credit, we have to build upon the work that has already started, and so we have just have seen an opportunity to really seize this moment and take the work to another level. And looking forward to bringing this to our governmental ops under the leadership of Lydia Edwards, who's like the best translator I have seen, who does an amazing job when we come into her space and really listening to what we're bringing to the table and breaking it down in ways that make a difference. And I've noticed you do that time and time again, councillor Edwards, when I've been in your sessions, and I really do appreciate how thorough and how thoughtful you have been in educating our audience along the way. So, looking forward to bringing this into your space and, more importantly, moving the work forward. Thank you to my colleagues.
Thank you. The chair recognizes councillor Wu. Councillor Wu, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Just wanted to add a huge, huge kudos to the sponsor here, ask that my name be added as well. It is well past time to update this ordinance and make sure that, especially what we've seen during COVID, in terms of the digital divide, language access, communications access, that we are seizing on this moment to incorporate everything that we have learned and that so many of our colleagues have been innovating on in this session. So, I'm proud to add my name here, and thank you so much again to councillor Mahia for her leadership.
Thank you. Would anyone else want to speak? Seeing no blue hands, a show of physical hands. Madam Clerk, if you could please add councillor Brayden, councillor Edwards, councillor O'Malley, councillor Campbell, councillor Arroyo, councillor Asabi George, councillor Flynn, councillor Flaherty. You already have councillor Wu, please also add councillor Bach, and please add the chair. Docket 1041 will be assigned to the Committee on Government Operations, and we'll move on to docket 1042.
Docket 1042, councillor Flynn offered the following resolution, celebrating the centennial of Disabled American Veterans, DAV.
Thank you. The chair recognizes councillor Flynn. Councillor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, I filed this resolution to recognize and celebrate the centennial of the Disabled American Veterans, a veteran organization that provides professional support and assistance to veterans and their families in obtaining benefits and service that they earned. The DAV was founded on September 25, 1920, and chartered by Congress on June 17, 1932, as the official voice of the nation's wartime disabled veterans. It is the largest wartime veteran service organization in the United States, with 1 million service-disabled veterans in membership and thousands here in Boston are members. The DAV provides professional support and assistance to veterans and their family in obtaining benefits and services through military service. Each year provides 6,000 rides to veterans attending medical appointments as well. This organization deserves recognition for their outstanding advocacy in our communities. This resolution recognizes the significant commitment and contributions that the DAV has made to our veterans, as well as celebrates the 100 years of service in our country. This is an organization I'm very active with and proud that I go to Washington once a year and advocate on behalf of disabled veterans across the country. I just wanted to highlight one person that was my roommate for the last three years in Washington that's no longer with us, is Boston Police Officer Joe Zink. I know many of the city councillors and councillor, and Clerk Feeney know Joe very well, but he was a tremendous asset and provided exceptional leadership to veterans and military families. I know he's missed, but the work of the DAV continues. I would like to suspend and pass this resolution. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much. Not seeing any discussion. Oh, is this, you want to speak, councillor Breaker?
Yeah, I don't know where my blue hand is, sorry.
The chair recognizes councillor Breaker. Councillor Breaker, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd just like to thank councillor Flynn for his consistent work in this area here. I have an uncle that came back from Vietnam paralyzed from the neck down, and when he came back, didn't really face a country that was supportive of him. So, even though he didn't get that upon his arrival, he did get that throughout, you know, the rest of his year, and I just want to again thank you councillor Flynn for your advocacy for the disabled American veterans. Thank you, and sign on.
Thank you so much, councillor Breaker. The chair recognizes councillor Arroyo. Councillor Arroyo, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to thank councillor Flynn for his work on this as well. I've had a member in my family serve in every war that this country has had. All came back different, some were not blessed to come back whole and healthy, and so it's something that means a lot to families like mine, and families I'm sure like yours, councillor Flynn, I know you've served, as well as councillor Edwards' family served, and so, you know, this is really important, I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. Not seeing any other blue hands, a show of physical hands for folks who want to add their name. Madam Clerk, if you could please add councillor Brayden, councillor Edwards, councillor O'Malley, you have councillor Breaker, councillor Bach, councillor Arroyo, councillor Asabi George, councillor Flaherty, councillor Mahia, councillor Campbell, councillor Wu, please also add the chair. Councillor Flynn seeks suspension of the rules and adoption of docket 1042. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Excuse me. Councillor Arroyo.
Yes.
Councillor Arroyo, yes. Councillor Baker.
Yes.
Councillor Baker, yes. Councillor Bach.
My apologies, yes.
Councillor Bach, yes. Councillor Brayden.
Yes.
Councillor Brayden, yes. Councillor Campbell.
Yes.
Councillor Campbell, yes. Councillor Edwards.
Yes.
Councillor Edwards, yes. Councillor Asabi George.
Yes.
Councillor Asabi George, yes. Councillor Flaherty.
Yes.
Councillor Flaherty, yes. Councillor Flynn.
Yes.
Councillor Flynn, yes. Councillor Janey.
Yes.
Councillor, yes. Councillor Mahia.
Yes.
Councillor Mahia, yes. Councillor O'Malley.
Yes.
Councillor O'Malley, yes. And councillor Wu.
Yes.
Councillor Wu, yes. Madam President, docket number 1042 has received a unanimous.
Thank you. Docket 1042 has been adopted, and now we'll move on to docket 1043.
Docket 1043, councillors Brayden and Flynn offered the following resolution, recognizing white cane safety day on October 15.
Thank you. The chair recognizes councillor Brayden. Councillor Brayden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, for this resolution with my cosponsor, councillor Flynn, recognizing next Thursday, October 15, as white cane safety day. White cane are an essential tool that enable our visually impaired and blind neighbors the ability to achieve a full and independent life, allowing them to move freely and safely from place to place. It seems to be a theme today to talk about safety and especially pedestrian safety. Every resident of all abilities should be aware that the law requires that motorists and cyclists exercise appropriate caution when approaching blind person carrying a white cane and yield the right of way at street crossings. The month of October is also recognized as National Disability Employment Awareness Month, and the white cane demonstrates and symbolizes the ability to achieve a full and independent life and the capacity to work productively in competitive employment without discrimination based on ability status. And may you know that I worked for many years at Perkins School for the Blind as a physical therapist, and I had the great honor and privilege of working with many dedicated teachers of the visually impaired, but also, in this context, orientation and mobility specialists, who, their job was to teach students how to navigate the world using a white cane and use also to new technology to help them get around as well, but the white cane was a really important tool. And I'd also like to raise up and honor the work of the mobility orientation and mobility specialists who work in the Boston Public Schools, who work with our students with visual impairment to help them achieve independence and be able to fulfill their full potential as being independently mobile young people using their white cane. So, thank you so much.
Thank you so much. The chair recognizes councillor Flynn. Councillor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you, President Janey. Thank you councillor Brayden for including me as a, in this resolution. I think councillor Brayden summed it up the best. This is about making sure that persons with disabilities are treated with respect and dignity and have full access, equal access throughout our city and throughout our country. So, I just want to say thank you to councillor Brayden. I also wanted to highlight Commissioner Kristen McCosh at the mayor's commission for persons with disability. They do a tremendous job on so many issues impacting persons with disabilities, and it's probably one of the best departments that we have in the city. They're making sure that persons with disabilities are treated fairly and with respect. So, I just wanted to highlight that agency, but also thank councillor Brayden for her longtime work on this issue and in her support for persons with disabilities. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much. I see that councillor Baker has found his blue Zoom hand. Councillor Baker, you have the floor.
I did find it, thank you. Like councillor Flynn before, I'd like to just thank councillor Brayden for her advocacy for people without sight. Similar to my uncle, my brother John was born without sight, spent most of his life going through Dorchester without the white cane. It took for him to get a little bit of age till he finally realized, like, glasses, we need glasses, he needed a white cane. So, just thank you, Liz, for your advocacy here, and I'd like to sign on.
Thank you, thank you. Not seeing anyone else who wants to speak, a show of physical hands for those who want to add their names. Madam Clerk, if you could please add councillor Edwards, councillor O'Malley, you have councillor Baker, councillor Flaherty, councillor Bach, councillor Arroyo, councillor Asabi George, councillor Mahia, councillor Wu, councillor Campbell. Please also add the chair. Our councillors Brayden and Flynn seek suspension of the rules and adoption of docket 1043. Madam Clerk, if you would please call the roll.
Docket 1043, councillor Arroyo.
Yes.
Councillor Arroyo, yes. Councillor Baker.
Yes.
Councillor Baker, yes. Councillor Bach.
Yes.
Councillor Bach, yes. Councillor Brayden.
Yes.
Councillor Brayden, yes. Councillor Campbell.
Yes.
Councillor Campbell, yes. Councillor Edwards.
Yeah.
Councillor Edwards, yes. Councillor Asabi George.
Yes.
Councillor Asabi George, yes. Councillor Flaherty.
Yes.
Councillor Flaherty, yes. Councillor Flynn.
Yes.
Councillor Flynn, yes. Councillor, excuse me, councillor Janey.
Yes.
Councillor Janey, yes. Councillor Mahia.
Yes.
Councillor Mahia, yes. Councillor O'Malley.
Yes.
Councillor O'Malley, yes. And councillor Wu.
Yes.
Councillor Wu, yes. Madam President, docket number 01, I'm sorry, 1043 has received a unanimous vote.
Thank you. Docket 1043 has been adopted, and we will now move on to docket 1044.
Docket 1044, councillor Asabi George and Bach offer the following resolution, recognizing October as National Co-op Month.
Thank you. The chair recognizes councillor Asabi George. You have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam President, and thank you to councillor Bach for joining me on this resolution. There are many kinds of cooperatives in Boston, but they all operate to build democratic communities and equally shared economic power. Co-ops have been a part of the fabric for the United States for over 100 years, from community composting with Sero to hosting an event at makeshift Boston, to environmentally-friendly home cleaning services with Vita Verde Women's Co-op, to grabbing a beer at Democracy Brewing. Boston is home to many creative and innovative co-ops. With this resolution, we celebrate them and encourage Boston to support the many co-ops here in and around our city. Thank you, Madam President, and thank you councillor Bach.
Thank you so much. The chair recognizes councillor Bach. Councillor Bach, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Madam President, and thanks to councillor Asabi George for cosponsoring this with me. My objective is to just talk about cooperatives as much as possible until they become our default and first thought in terms of a form of economic organization, because as I've mentioned to this body before, co-ops really are a way of seeding real economic democracy of, you know, in a cooperative housing, it's one person, one vote, no matter how much of a state people own, and it really, I think, really cultivates the kind of stable, shared ownership society that really protects our democratic values and a sense of community. So, you know, as councillor Asabi George alluded to, there are cooperatives of all types. So, you know, as Counselor Asabi George alluded to, there are cooperatives of all types. Counselor Edwards has been a real leader in supporting worker co-ops across the city, both in her private legal career and her public one. And we had a really successful hearing focused on housing cooperatives a few weeks ago, thanks to so many advocates and service providers and D and D. And so we're looking forward to the next steps on that. But this is Co-op Month, and our cooperative members across the city are some of our most engaged citizens and residents. And so I just wanted to acknowledge all of them and excited to have the Council, hopefully, vote to really recognize the special contribution they make to our city for this month. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. I don't see anyone else who wants to speak, so a show of physical hands for those who want to add their name. Madam Clerk, if you could please add Counselor Braden, Counselor Edwards, Counselor O'Malley, Counselor Baker, Counselor Arroyo, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Mejia, Counselor Wu, Counselor Campbell. Please also add the Chair. Counselors Asabi George and Bach seek suspension of the rules and adoption of Docket 1044. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Docket 1044, Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Counselor Baker, yes. Counselor Bach.
Yes.
Counselor Bach, yes. Counselor Braden.
Yes.
Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Campbell.
Yes.
Counselor Campbell, yes. Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Counselor Edwards, yes. Counselor Asabi George.
Yes.
Counselor Asabi George, yes. Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty, yes. Counselor Flynn.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Janey.
Yes.
Counselor Janey, yes. Counselor Mejia.
Yes.
Counselor Mejia, yes. Counselor O'Malley.
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley, yes. Counselor Wu.
Yes.
Counselor Wu, yes. Madam President, Docket 1044 has received a unanimous vote.
Thank you so much. Docket 1044 has been adopted, and we'll move on to Docket 1045.
Docket 1045, Counsel Flaherty offered the following resolution in recognition of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
Thank you so much. The Chair recognizes Counsel Flaherty. Counsel Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to suspend or twelven add Counselors Campbell and Counsel Flynn as original co-sponsors.
Seeing and hearing no objections, Counsel Flynn and Campbell have been added.
Thank you, Madam President. And I'd obviously like to thank them for their partnership. October has been designated Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the United States since 1981, and it is prevalent in every community and affects people regardless of age, sexual orientation, gender, socioeconomic status, religion, or nationality. To understand how prevalent domestic violence still is in the United States, on average, nearly 20 people per minute are physically abused by an intimate partner in the United States. This equates to approximately 10 million people per year. This October brings awareness to the issue more important than ever because as a result of COVID-19, many individuals and their families find themselves at home with an abuser and with less access to their communities and networks of support. So just last night, the CEO of Casamirana, Stephanie Brown, was honored at the 2020 Shattuck City Champion Awards that many of us had attended virtually for her excellent work at Casamirana. And she worked hard to reframe how our communities view domestic violence and to advocate for changes in our legal system that help protect survivors. Casamirana offers residential programs, housing assistance, advocacy, financial literacy, and job readiness, skill building, individual and group counseling, legal advocacy and representation, children's services, along with community-based advocacy. There are so many other resources available outside of Casamirana in the Boston area, whether it's the Boston Area Rape Crisis Center, the Asian Task Force Against Domestic Violence, Association of Haitian Women in Boston, Massachusetts Allegiance of Portuguese Speakers, the Urban League of Eastern Mass has a great program run by Reverend Tracy Jackson. She does great work over there, as well as countless other community-based organizations and community leaders that are working diligently to connect survivors to resources. So if anyone is listening that wants to report any cases of domestic violence, you can do so by anonymously calling the Crime Stoppers tip line at 1-800-494-TIPS or by texting the word TIP to crime27463. In a case of emergency, people should call 911 to report instances of domestic violence. So looking forward to suspension and adoption today, but one of my co-sponsors to add in. So again, serious issue, and we need to continue to keep focus on this, particularly during COVID. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much. The Chair recognizes Counsel Flynn. Counsel Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, I want to say thank you to Counselor Flaherty for adding myself and Counselor Campbell, but more importantly, thanking Counselor Flaherty as an Assistant District Attorney for the work he did in support of survivors of domestic violence in the court system. So thank you to Counsel Flaherty. I just wanted to highlight the work that Counselor Campbell and I did last year, and my colleagues as well, working with the administration. But we held a hearing at Northeastern University Law School with domestic violence providers. It was an excellent hearing. I want to say thank you to Counsel Campbell. I represent a large immigrant and LGBTQ community in my district, and I know that there are often barriers for these communities in reporting domestic violence as well. As Counsel Flaherty mentioned, some of the providers in my district that are doing exceptional work is the Fenway Health Center, which will be moving into Chinatown, a satellite office, but also the South End Health Center, which is now part of East Boston Community Health. And I know Counselor Edwards, as an attorney, did a lot of work on supporting victims, survivors of domestic violence. And I just wanted, and finally, I just wanted to highlight the work my mother did as First Lady of Boston. She did a lot of work supporting survivors of domestic violence, and I hope I can continue working hard on that issue, just like my mother did. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Campbell. Counsel Campbell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and of course, thank you to my colleagues, Counselors Flaherty and Flynn, for the partnership in this particular resolution. And I have to thank, Aiden would also like to thank all of you, but I have to also thank Counsel Flynn for the partnership and the continued work with respect to not only issues of domestic violence, but also sexual assault and child abuse. What we learned through our conversations with survivors who were courageous enough to come to a public hearing and in several meetings to share their stories was that all of these issues are interconnected and intertwined in many ways. We also continue to extend gratitude to Northeastern Law School's Domestic Violence Clinic for not just the expertise for providing space, counsel advice as to how we could navigate these conversations in such a way that everyone felt included. There are many folks, whether it's the LGBTQ community or other folks in other communities, immigrant communities, that don't often feel represented in these conversations. Obviously, these issues have only been exacerbated in the midst of COVID-19. And we are continuing to work with providers, as well as Northeastern and so many others, on creative ways to allow for folks who are currently experiencing an incident of domestic violence or child abuse or sexual assault or something else to be able to report that. As you can imagine, it's very difficult if you are living with your abuser, but there are folks who are putting out technology, apps, different things to allow for this. So of course, we're always pushing the city to resource these endeavors or to partner. There's also been a push on the housing front. How do we allow for greater access to housing for those folks who are going through some very unfortunate incidents and are in some unfortunate circumstances? And so pushing our universities or hotels or others to open up their spaces for some of these survivors. So there's been a lot of work that happens behind the scenes. Of course, this resolution is just one way for us to acknowledge the people on the ground that have been doing this work for decades. We often tell ourselves it's important to take care of ourselves during this time of COVID and the collective trauma we're all feeling as public servants. But the folks who are doing work in this space are, in many ways, of course, heroes. And so this is just one way for us to continue to uplift them, the organizations that do the work on the ground, and of course, the folks who have the courage to be able to turn their pain into purpose by helping other survivors as well. And so thank you to Counselor Flaherty and Counselor Flynn for the partnership. Of course, we hope all counselors will continue to raise awareness on these issues and continue to work in partnership with all of you on solving and eradicating them. So thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much. Not seeing anyone who wants to speak to this, a show of physical hands. Madam Clerk, if you could please add Counselor Braden, Counselor Edwards, Counselor O'Malley, Counselor Asabi George, Counselor Bach, Counselor Arroyo, Counselor Mejia, Counselor Baker, and Counselor Wu. Please also add the Chair. Counselors Flynn, Counselors Flaherty, Flynn and Campbell seek suspension of the rules and adoption of Docket 1045. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Docket 1045, Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Counselor Baker, yes. Counselor Bach.
Yes.
Counselor Bach, yes. Counselor Braden.
Yes.
Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Campbell.
Yes.
Counselor Campbell, yes. Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Counselor Edwards, yes. Counselor Asabi George.
Sorry, yes.
Counselor Asabi George, yes. Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Janey.
Yes.
Counsel Janey, yes. Counsel Mejia.
Yes.
Counsel Mejia, yes. Counsel O'Malley.
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley, yes. And Counsel Wu.
Yes.
Counsel Wu, yes. Madam President, Docket number 1045 has received a unanimous vote.
Thank you so much. Docket 1045 has been adopted. We'll now move on to personnel orders, beginning with Docket 1046.
Thank you. Docket 1046, Counsel Janey for Counselor O'Malley.
Counsel O'Malley seeks passage of this docket. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Thank you. Docket number 1046, Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Baker.
Yes.
Counsel Baker, yes. Counsel Bach.
Yes.
Counsel Bach, yes. Counsel Braden.
Yes.
Counsel Braden, yes. Counsel Campbell.
Yes.
Counsel Campbell, yes. Counsel Edwards.
Yes.
Counsel Edwards, yes. Counsel Asabi George.
Yes.
Counsel Asabi George, yes. Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Janey.
Yes.
Counsel Janey, yes. Counsel Mejia.
Yes.
Counsel Mejia, yes. Counsel O'Malley.
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley, yes. And Counsel Wu.
Yes.
Counsel Wu, yes. Madam President, Docket number 1046 received a unanimous vote.
Thank you. Docket 1046 has passed. I don't believe there's anyone wanting to remove something from the green sheets, so we will move on to the consent agenda. Wonderful. And I've been informed by the clerk that there is one addition to the consent agenda. If you're interested, it's in your email. If you'd like to see that item, you'd have an email. Seeing and hearing no objections, this matter will be added to the consent agenda. And at this time, the Chair moves for adoption of the consent agenda, and will do so through a roll call vote. Madam Clerk?
Yes. Vote on the consent agenda. Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counsel Arroyo, yes. Counsel Baker.
Yes.
Counsel Baker, yes. Counsel Bach.
Yes.
Counsel Bach, yes. Counsel Braden.
Yes.
Counsel Braden, yes. Counsel Campbell.
Yes.
Counsel Campbell, yes. Counsel Edwards.
Yes.
Counsel Edwards, yes. Counsel Asabi George.
Yes.
Counsel Asabi George, yes. Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Janey.
Yes.
Counsel Janey, yes. Counsel Mejia.
Yes.
Counsel Mejia, yes. Counsel O'Malley.
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley, yes. Counsel Wu.
Yes.
Counsel Wu, yes. Madam President, the consent agenda has received a unanimous vote.
Thank you so much. The consent agenda has been adopted. Next on our agenda is announcements. But before we go into announcements, I want to come back to Counselor Edwards. I apologize for not seeing your blue hand earlier in the meeting. I believe you wanted to speak to Docket 1032. Yes?
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Madam President. I did want to speak to Docket 1032, which, as my colleagues remember, is the Mayor's Housing Stability Notification Act. I wanted to, I felt that we needed to respond as a body, meeting the mayor's urgency, but also acknowledging that this is a good start. The fact of the matter is, this conversation actually started in 2016 and '17 with Counselors Baker and Counsel Zachem, when they, at that point, tried to push for notification to be part of the process for landlords and tenants. At that time, the administration did not feel that enforcement was possible or that they had the capacity to follow up. I'm so happy to see that the administration has changed their mind and is now meeting the moment of today, which includes a pandemic and the pending end of the eviction moratorium on October 17. We also, and I make this commitment to my colleagues, but also on behalf of many of my colleagues, we intend very firmly to also meet this moment. What the mayor has filed is the beginning of a good conversation. But as I had been previously asked to suspend and pass today, I will not be doing that because it's the beginning, not the end. We, as a body, need to look at this language and think of a truly comprehensive, effective way to protect tenants, commercial and residential, on October 17 and 18, and so on and so forth. And I believe we can do that together. Advocates need to look at this language because the fact of the matter is, what this bill does is requires notices to quit to be filed with the City Office of Housing Stability, and that this notice to quit will be accompanied by a notice of rights to tenant. Tenants will only know about that when our advocates, our stakeholders, those people on the ground, are able to inform them of those rights. They need to be at the table to look at this notification act and really make it real. And also, I don't want people to assume that a false sense of security. This does not change the eviction timeline. This does not change your rights in court. It is not a defense to an eviction if you don't get this paperwork. What it would ultimately do is fine landlords for not providing this information. And so when you're going to impose a fine on a body, I believe those individuals, those landlords, should be also at the table to help inform this policy. So what I'm committed to doing is making sure that we not only have a hearing about this, but that we also include the stakeholders. But we will be able to do so by or before the 17th of October or immediately after on October 21st and be able to pass something to make sure it's effective for all of our constituents. I wanted to also call on the mayor, and while he is pushing on the city council to respond, I also would call on him to respond in the following ways that actually get to the heart of the matter as well. One, I would ask that the mayor file or have the Boston Public Health Commission declare an emergency order to establish an eviction moratorium in Boston. What that means is that as a public health crisis, that we are in a pandemic, that our Public Health Commission should actually declare that levying an eviction, removing somebody from their home, entering their apartment that is occupied, is a public health issue. And as a result, it violates our sanitation code, and as a result, we should not allow that in Boston. Again, removing somebody from their home, their things, their items, and putting them on the street in the middle of a pandemic is a health issue. The mayor can do that. That actually stops people from being removed from their homes, and that's something I think that the mayor should absolutely consider. Not only is it more forceful than simply filing paperwork with the tenants, it actually is bringing in the Public Health Commission and doing what he has done before with the Declaration for Racism as a public health crisis. Because when the mayor did that, he also put money where his mouth was. And that's another thing, and another point that the mayor and the administration has been asked to do and could do, put some money out there for landlords. The fact of the matter is, at the State House, they're looking at canceling rent. They're looking at ways in which you bring landlords to the table by providing a tax credit for the missed rent and for landlords that will not evict their tenants. Well, I'm proposing the city lead in that way as well. Look at the taxes and seriously consider helping landlords who are not collecting rent right now with either matching the tax, excuse me, matching the rent money that they have not received with a tax credit or a certain percentage of it. Let's talk about our own coffers while we are limiting and also about to fine landlords on theirs. So there is some real action that can be taken, and I just came up with that on my own, honestly. But with the whole stakeholders at the table, we could actually come up with a comprehensive... a comprehensive, effective way of actually preventing mass evictions in Boston. So I look forward to that conversation, and you have my commitment as the Chair of Government Ops to take this very seriously, but right now, as it's proposed, it's not ready, it is not effective, and it is not actually going to help tenants on October 17th.
Thank you for that. And I see a couple of blue hands up, so I just want to, before we move forward, I want to clarify. Are those who have their blue hands up, are you guys looking to speak to Docket 1032 or these other announcements? You guys have other announcements? Okay, great. So thank you for that. I'm sorry that I missed you when we were at that part of the agenda earlier. Counselor Edwards, I think your comments are well taken, and in terms of this body, it is important that we do our due diligence. And so when we have an ordinance before us, we need to assign it to the GovOPS committee, and we need to have some thoughtful discussion. And so I am confident that we will do that with this ordinance, and that we will move in an expedited manner so that we can offer this relief, and I appreciate your leadership. So thank you for that. The Chair at this time recognizes Counselor Baker. Counselor Baker, you have the floor.
Sorry, Madam Chair. I just wanted to see if it was possible to get back into 1040. I just wanted to sign my name onto that. Have we moved on?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. So Madam Clerk, this is Docket 1040. It was the transportation hearing order with me, Flynn, and Bach. If we could add Counselor Baker as a sponsor, that would be great. Thank you, Counselor Baker. The Chair recognizes, thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor O'Malley. Counselor O'Malley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to brief all of you on a really horrific event that occurred in my district yesterday afternoon. A young man from Rosendale was going for a jog on a beautiful fall day down the VFW Parkway, a road that I have jogged on hundreds, if not thousands, of times. I have never been stopped while jogging, and you can deduce why that is. This man was stopped. He is a black man who was stopped by a van that pulled over on a parkway, which isn't conducive to pulling over, there's no parking spots, and three individuals got out purporting to be law enforcement or ICE agents, were very sort of, I think, belligerent in their questioning of him. He had the wherewithal, he shouldn't have had to, but had the wherewithal to pull out his cell phone to begin recording, and their demeanor and actions seemed to change. It was unlawful, it was unacceptable, it was racist. It is one of the reasons why I know all of us on this body are committed to many reforms and proud to partner with Counselor Campbell on work and several others, Counselor Edwards as well, as it relates to stop and frisk and unlawful stops. We're still trying to ascertain as much information as we can. I've spoken with the victim, I've spoken with Congressman Presley, Congressman Lynch, Senator Warren's office, Senator Markey's office. This was not, these men, I believe now, it has, through the course of this hearing, it has come to the realization that they were indeed ICE agents, although it still is unclear whether or not they had the proper badges. But it was just an abhorrent incident that occurred on our streets. A young man was going for a jog on a warm, relatively warm fall day, through a parkway and was stopped, and it is beyond unacceptable. I am going to obviously pursue this to the highest levels to make sure it does not happen again here or anywhere else, but I think it underscores something that we all know, and particularly our colleagues of color know, that incidents like this do happen, and they're terrifying, and they can have awful, deadly, in some cases, results, as we know. And we need to stop them, we need to get to the bottom of what has happened, and we need to do everything we can to ensure it does not happen again. As I said, you know, the victim is doing better, but still obviously very, very affected, as we all are, but as he and his family particularly are. So as more information comes in, I will, of course, share it with you all. Really thankful to our colleagues in government, particularly at the federal level, as I say, Congressman Presley, Congressman Lynch, and our two senators have been working on this, as well as with our delegation out here in West Roxbury, but it's something that we all know needs to be acknowledged, addressed, and fixed. So I just wanted to brief you all, as it's sort of an ongoing, as we collect more information, we'll continue to share it as more information becomes available. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor O'Malley. The Chair recognizes Counselor Wu. Counselor Wu, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I apologize earlier, I think I signaled the wrong way. I was trying to convey that I also wanted to speak on Counselor Edwards' topic.
Oh, I apologize.
I'm sorry, now that it's out of order, I should have spoken up. I do want to echo Counselor O'Malley as well now, and just say that it's absolutely inexcusable, unjustifiable, and the city, and certainly the family deserve full transparency and accountability. So going back to the docket that Counselor Edwards was speaking about, the ordinance that was filed, I do just want to thank the Chair for taking a beat and not suspending and passing, giving us time to have a full public conversation on this, and recognizing that this is an issue that has been a solution and small step forward, that has been recommended before and rejected before, and it's great that we're seeing it move forward now, but that this does not address the underlying issue of people during this pandemic unable to pay the underlying rent obligations that have been building up and building up, and then landlords, particularly small landlords, unable to meet their mortgage obligations as everyone is caught in this chain. And so we need to see full city authority applied to this. A number of us previously have attempted to move forward and put out proposals about how we could use municipal tools around property tax deferral or abatement to address this. The administration has stated that they are unwilling to consider that, unwilling to do so, and that the city's rental relief fund has not even been dispersed, millions of dollars sort of stuck right now, as latest that I have heard of the current situation. And so we are in an ongoing pandemic where residents getting kicked out of their homes, being on the street, is a matter of life or death when you do not have safe shelter to quarantine and take care of yourself and secure your family. So we need to address the underlying issue, which is the debt that is accumulating, and how we will stabilize families who are facing increasing financial pressure. It's not just about pushing off a deadline when people can be evicted. Certainly, we need to extend that as far as we can into, you know, the next, knock on wood, federal administration, but what can we do with city resources in the meantime to also address that financial piece of it? Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. The Chair recognizes Counselor Arroyo. Counselor Arroyo, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to make an announcement about an event that's taking place Tuesday. It'll be online, it's a forum. We have, like every other neighborhood in the city, been grappling with what racial equity and social equity and racial justice looks like. In Hyde Park, we had a neighborhood association, the West Vermont Hill Community Group, reach out to my office to look towards putting together a community conversation specifically about Hyde Park on this matter, and so we partnered with them, and that panel will include myself, Tanisha Sullivan from NAACP, Johnny Charles, and Sedan Adou, all of whom are Hyde Park residents. It'll be moderated by our own Julia Mejia. And you can see that Tuesday, October 13, from 6:30 to 8:15 p.m. via Zoom. It's bitly, B-I-T-L-Y, at HP Forum, slash HP Forum to find it. It's also my birthday on that day, so this is how I'll be celebrating my birthday, having these kinds of important conversations. And so I look forward to it, and I just want to make sure everybody was aware that it was happening, in case they wanted to drop in and participate. Thank you.
So this isn't the time to tell you it's really a surprise birthday party?
Oh, well, if it is, then I'd have to set it up myself.
I'm teasing. Let's hope it is, I don't know.
We'll see.
The Chair recognizes Counselor Mejia. Counselor Mejia, you have the floor.
Yeah, happy early birthday, Arroyo. So yes, thank you, Madam President. As we know, the mayor today announced that the Boston Public Schools will be putting the reopening plan on pause. K-2 students who were originally supposed to begin hybrid learning starting October the 15th will now begin October the 22nd at the earliest. There is a clear need to lead with the community to talk about what the future BPS reopening will look like, and we have been unapologetic in stating that nothing about us without us is for us, and we need to start making this a reality, especially as it relates to our students, teachers, and parents, and the overall community. This is why this upcoming Monday, from 6 to 8, we'll be hosting a community conversation on the revised BPS opening plan, and we'll be centering this conversation around those who have been most impacted with the changes of these new plans, and putting our, putting our information on our social media soon. But I just really think it's important for us to recognize that oftentimes, we continue to see that things are being done to us without us, and I think that we have an opportunity to really seize this moment to ensure that those who are most impacted by these decisions can weigh in. So I'm looking forward to hosting that community conversation and inviting my colleagues to participate in the process. And the last thing that I would just like to bring to light, especially in the height of all of this racial tension and conversations that we've been seeing here in the city of Boston, you know, it's really difficult to be in spaces as a elected official, knowing all of the trauma that we carry from previous decades of racial tension that exist, right? So the fact that it's 2020, 2020, and we're still having the same conversation and still dodging the same racial bullets, and now as an elected official ending up in these spaces, it's just disheartening that as a team, all of us, and I want to be honest about all of us, is that we're 13 councilors, we represent 22 neighborhoods, and if we, as a body, really can't understand the important role that we all play in moving this conversation forward, I feel like we're going to miss out on an opportunity to really do some restorative justice. And I am incredibly grateful to our councilors who are stepping up and leaning into this racial tension that exists in the city of Boston, and leaning into the conversation instead of falling back on it. But I think that these times require all of us to recognize that our constituents, no matter who it is that we serve, are all looking to us to really dig in and figure out what we're going to do moving forward. It is getting a little bit hostile in a lot of different spaces, and I think that we can no longer ignore the elephant in the room, that when it comes to issues of race and equity, we all need to be having the same conversation as a collective body. And I know that we have open meeting laws and all that other stuff that prevents us from moving together, but it is my hope, while the little bit of time that I have left on this term here, that we find ways to really work as a collective body to move this conversation forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Mejia. The Chair recognizes Counselor Asabi George. Counselor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I do want to just know, and councilors have already sort of referenced this, but in case anyone didn't miss the press conference this morning, the citywide COVID-19 testing positivity rate now exceeds 4% for the first time since early June. As a result, BPS will be delaying that phased-in reopening process to prioritize the safety of our highest need students. Through some of the conversations, most recently with sped pack and parents of high need students, it's really important to stress how important it is to do this right and to make sure our students, especially those high need students, have access to the services that they need. Families who were anticipating a return to that in-person instruction next week, this is very disappointing, for sure, for that delay, and as a mother of four Boston Public School students, I know how difficult it can be. So for sure, that work, and our focus will continue on that. I want to also note that October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and yesterday I had my annual mammogram. It is not glamorous by any stretch of the imagination, but it is, I did a tweet, actually, I was sort of inspired, I wore my sparkly mask and thought I could doll this activity up, but it is impossible to doll up a mammogram, but it is so incredibly important that women and men, especially men who have either a history or are noted by their primary care doctors, to get mammograms should be getting mammograms. It's just really important, so I want to put that out there, I want to remove some of the stigma. Perhaps we should make mammograms more glamorous. Perhaps next time I'll get dolled up, heels, dress, and all, but it's necessary, and I encourage all to go out and do it. Also, you know, mammograms come with age, another thing that comes with age is celebrating the birthdays of my children. Yesterday, my oldest, Douglas, turned 16. He says he's not a girl, so it's not sweet, but I'm his mom, and I call it a sweet 16. So just happy, happy birthday to Douglas, and thank you, Madam President, for indulging me for a few extra moments, both with the serious business of our schools, and the pandemic, and the importance of mammograms, and the celebration of to be 16 again. Thank you.
Thank you, and happy birthday, Douglas. It is important that we do celebrate all of the milestones in our lives, so thank you for bringing that into our space here. I want to add some more celebration to the mix. Ordinarily, this time of year, we would be hosting a wonderful luncheon in one of our amazing conference rooms to acknowledge all of the amazing public servants who are recognized each year by the Boston Municipal Research Bureau, and this year, we're not able to do that luncheon, but I did want to publicly acknowledge so many folks that work for the city for their recognition and being honored this year. I will even attempt to read off some names, and I've already looked at the names, these are some tough names, so please, if anyone is watching and you're on this list, please forgive me if I do not pronounce your name correctly, but I do want to congratulate Stephanie Brown, Kevin Conney, Habak Jack Yesman, Laurie Glitchmer, Mary Beth Kelly, Lisa Zick, Maureen Anderson, Stacy Cockrum, John Campbell, Agniesz Lopez, Thomas Caulfield, and Magadi Raymond. Congratulations. Any other announcements? Great, no more announcements. We will now move on to memorials. Today, we adjourn our meeting in memory of the following individuals. For Counselor Asabi George, John Thomas Glenn. For Councilors Flaherty and Flynn, Mary McNally, Catherine O'Connor, Richard Nakassian, and retired BPD Deputy Superintendent Ed Walsh. And for Counselor Flynn, Sifu Wu Ching, and Dr. Walter Lee. A moment of silence, please. Thank you. The Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals. The council is scheduled to meet again on Wednesday, October 21st. Again, that's Wednesday, October 21st. We skip next week. For the safety of the general public and all those involved, the meeting will be held virtually and posted online. Viewers can watch the council meeting live on YouTube by visiting boston.gov/city-council-tv. All those in favor of adjournment, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Great. This council meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you all, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President.
Are we having a luncheon today with Counselor Arroyo?
Oh, I believe we are. Is he still on? I believe we are.
Okay. I'll look forward to the link and email.
I think we are, I'm not sure. We have to check with the board.
Thank you, Madam President. Sorry, I think I cut you off there.